All right, we have six o'clock, so I'm gonna call to order the Buckingham Planting Commission meeting for November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Like for everyone to stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Doria and a pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Cruz.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. We thank you for all our blessings, Father. We thank you for each one here participating tonight. May we say or do something that may make somebody's dreams come true here in this county. And we ask you to bless us tonight. Keep us and give us safe passage home. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us a staff of four. We have a full slate, we have eight of eight, so we have a full court. Nikki, is any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thing done, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion on second. Any discussion? A vote?
Cruz and Gianna in the background, they all ain't voted.
That's verded on my screen.
Push it again.
Still not coming up?
Five, yes. That's three people didn't get accounted for.
Commissioner, I'm gonna have to ask you, there was a little bit of a technical difficulty. If I could go back and get a show of hands, or I can take each commissioner-
Okay, we can do by hands, that's no problem. All right, we had a motion on second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That was unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Let the record show that. All right, that brings us to approval of minutes. We have the October twenty-eighth, twenty-four regular meeting. Does anyone have any changes? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Go move.
Second.
I have a motion on second. Go to hands again, Nikki.
No, sir, we should be able to capture this with your voting machine. If I could just get the individual that seconded.
Second me. Steve. Okay. All right, see how we works this time.
Thank you all for your patience.
I still don't have anything. You wanna by hand again?
Oh, no, it's been captured.
Oh, okay, it's not reading on mine, that's why I was asking. Okay. Uh-oh, I just did it. Oh, damn it, I need your help. Thank you. Okay. Nikki, that brings us to public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening.
All right, I will close that, and we'll move to our whole business, the public hearing for Stephanie Marshall.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this evening we are having a public hearing for case twenty-four, SUP three fifty. Our applicants are Stephanie and Shane Marshall. The property on which the request is being made is Tax Map Eight, parcel fourteen, fifty-six point five seven acres. It's located at thirty-three, twenty-three Axle Road, Scottsville. It's in the James River Magisterial District. It's an A-one zoning currently, and the request before you is that the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing and operating a country store, retail store, and event center for up to seven hundred and fifty attendees. At last month's meeting, there was not a number of attendees that was listed, and the commission directed the applicant and I to have conversations. That conversation led to seven fifty, and that's what was advertised for in the Farmville Herald. Events to include but not limited to cooking classes, children's educational classes, micro weddings, agritours, themed evenings with wineries, distilleries, breweries, adult meetings and presentations, food trucks, cattle industry seminars and tours, Wagu Association meetings, vendor partnerships, and monthly meeting, community networking opportunities as well. Again, there are eleven conditions that are attached to this public hearing, excuse me, to the special use permit request. These are the same that were introduced to you last month at the regular meeting. I do see that our applicants are here as well to address questions or concerns this evening.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Before I open up the public hearing, is, any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Chairman?
Yes?
I'm just curious to find out, I mean, we did not have a number of attendees in the last meeting, and now they've come up with this. I'd like to know how that number was derived. I mean, I've seen the property, I've seen the road. That's a fairly sizable number of people, and I don't know the number of events they intend to have. So is that something we need to ask them, or?
Well, we can discuss it now, or go ahead and have the public hearing, and then we'll be discussing it after that. And if, or we can have the applicant and Nikki discuss it now. Which would be your preference?
Well, I'd like to ask the question, maybe the applicants can come forward.
Okay. Please state your full name, address, of course.
Shane Marshall, thirty-three, twenty-three Axle Road, Scottsville, Virginia, two four five nine zero. This is my wife, Stephanie.
Stephanie P. Marshall, thirty-three, twenty-three Axle Road.
Right. The question people had and asked is how you derived the seven hundred and fifty.
Basically, we were looking at, as far as the maximum there with that is with the events, and we're talking back and forth about, you know, possibly having the schools involved and bringing some kids and stuff from the schools out to be able to do some agritours to hopefully introduce them and keep them interested in agricultural type occupations down the road. That we were thinking that depending upon the schools and things and how we were able to work it, we didn't want to limit ourselves on not being able to accommodate if we were able to, you know, get things sorted out with the schools to be able to make this happen, you know, limit ourselves on that.
So, factually, how did you come up with the seven fifty? I mean, did you go canvass any of the schools to find out if in fact you were to bring students on? How many would be, how many would likely come? I mean, was this, or was this an idea?
We did not, no. So basically, this is what we're trying to do here, is we're, you know, we're obviously, one of our main goals here is to have the agritourism be a part of us and the county. You know, with us going out and with Stephanie, and now we're selling our product to all the farmers' markets, it's really amazing how many people are really interested to know where their food is coming from. So that's what sparked all of this to really, to really get going. Obviously, we're really looking for a place to be able to sell our product because we're gaining ground with that, day by day, week by week, with more interest with that. But that's what really kind of sparked all of this, was really the interest that we're seeing from the public to want to come and see where their food that they're buying from us is actually coming from.
Can I interject for just a moment?
Sure.
To answer your question about the seven hundred and fifty people, I think that is the cap. I don't know if ever we would get to that cap, but we wanted to prevent having to come in front of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission over and over again if we limited, let's say if we put a hundred and fifty on that number, and then we actually had, you know, three buses of, you know, high school kids come in there, and the number was a hundred and seventy-three, you know, and then we had capped it off at one fifty, I'd have to come in front of you guys again and ask you to extend that number.
But obviously, too, we didn't, I don't, I don't like to kind of put the cart before the horse, so I really haven't gone out and pursued and gone to the schools and done all of that legwork yet, because obviously, we gotta get through all of this to be able to move forward. So I didn't want to pursue too much of that upfront.
So if you, let's, let's put the number aside for the moment, you just want a lot, you want a lot of room in order to have people come out, and I understand that. How many, in, in, in the event that it was approved for whatever number, how many events do you plan on having a year?
Well, I mean, right now, Nikki, was any of that sent to them at all? Any of the information that we had kind of talked about?
I don't know, I have another application that's similar, and I was looking back at the history of some. I want, Stephanie, I'm not sure if it was your application, Ms. Marshall, I apologize. If it was ten to twelve per year, am I wrong?
As, as far as gatherings of that size, that was just kind of what we had kind of projected, maybe ten, twelve events of that size.
About one a month.
You know, at the, you know, and then if, our main thing was the, was mainly doing that with the agritours, that would be a smaller number, you know, with those events, maybe fifty at the most.
My questions have been answered, thank you.
Okay, like, any other, Ms. Marshall, any other questions at this time? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Do you think it would be mostly busing in than men, more traffic, traffic, like individuals, like seven hundred and fifty people in cars versus seven hundred and fifty people in buses? That's all.
Yeah, my, my, right now, I'm feeling that those, the larger events would be more of a public thing with students and things of that nature that would come in, in buses. So it wouldn't be a number of cars that would, that would take place with all of that. Other smaller agritours that were, that were interested in, you know, those would be, you know, twenty to forty people, maybe.
Okay. I know it's an impact. If it's so many people, then we have to get the Sheriff's Department involved, if it's a lot of traffic, that's all. So that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions that just signed for the Commissioner? Okay, y'all could just go ahead and say.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Nikki, do we have people signed up?
We do, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, we do, Mr. Chairman, we have five that have signed up for the public hearing. The first is India Patterson, she will be followed by Robbie Patterson.
Okay. Please come forward and state your full name, address. You'll have three minutes to state your case for or against the application.
Good evening, I'm India Patterson, I live in Richmond, Virginia, but my family has been from Buckingham County since the seventeen hundreds. My property is located at two seventeen Fallsburg Road. And it abuts the Marshall's property. We are in the process of working with the United States Department of Agriculture for Conservation Easements and Conservation Habitat for Wildlife, and we are worried about how this will impact us. We are also worried about the, the safety of this. If all these people are there, are they going to come over into our property? I mean, we're very worried about that. So I would like these issues addressed. And also, under the, in the application, under the written narrative relevance proposed country store project, there are several areas that are very, very vague in what they are stating. It doesn't really answer the questions, and that bothers me a little bit. So I would like some clarification on some of these things. Under community design. Community design, it says, "We aim to create community hu, a community hub that fosters social connections and cultural exchange, enhancing the overall design and function of the area." What does this mean? What does this mean? I mean, I would like to know, what does that mean? Under economic development. "The country store will generate jobs in various sectors, including retail, hospitality, and agriculture. By attracting visitors for events and tours, we will stimulate local businesses, increasing economic activity, and support their local economy through partnership with nearby farms." I mean, I am a nearby farm, and I want to know how that's, what, how that's going to affect us. And then they say, under fire, rescue, and law enforcement, that our site will be designed with safety in mind, and we will work closely with law enforcement to maintain and secure an environment during gatherings. What does that mean? Does that mean you're gonna have the Sheriff's Department there? I have no problem with the country store, but I do have a problem with a lot of people coming up into this area that has always been rural, with a lot of people who don't really understand the country. And I'm worried about it disrupting the nature of our property.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie Patterson?
I'm Robbie Patterson, I'm glad to meet you all tonight and be here. First off, I'd like to say I've met the Marshals, and I think they're delightful people. But I have the same concerns that my sister has. I've been coming up here as far back as I can remember, and as she said, you know, we've been in, my family's been here over three hundred years. I come to this place, I love Buckingham County. I've traveled around the world, and there's no place on earth I'd rather be than right here. And the idea of all these people all of a sudden showing up in our backyard, I'm gonna be pretty honest with you, it kind of scares me. And I as well, you know, don't have a problem with a small country store. But beyond that, I have a very big problem with it. I mean, I can't vote in this county, but I do pay taxes. And I would just like y'all to consider these things, I mean, answer some of these questions. I've noticed that one of the things that was in, same with the Marshals came in, they said the property will increase, property value will increase your property value. That's all well and good if you're planning on selling your property, but all I'm hearing is my property taxes is gonna go up even higher than I'm already paying. Am I wrong in that thinking? And do y'all answer that? John?
We can, and we don't respond to questions.
Oh, okay.
Kind of the protocol that we adhere to at all meetings.
I may not be the sharpest knife in the drawer, but that sure as hell what it means to me, and that concerns me. So with that, I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Robert Gregory?
Good evening, y'all. I'm Robert Gregory, India's my mother, Robbie's my uncle. I kind of share the same sentiment that they've expressed here tonight, so I'm not gonna reiterate a lot of it. But the main thing that stands out to me is, is adjacent property with the amount of people, you know, on the property, what I'm concerned the most, it does pose a liability issue to our family potentially, and I'd like to know how that would be mitigated throughout, you know, any events that would be held if it is approved. And also, I do have concerns about the uptick in property value, thus uptick in property taxes. I'm not gonna really go into what was already talked about here, I don't wanna, you know, beat it at a horse, but I do share the same sentiment, and I appreciate y'all giving me the time to speak here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Jacqueline Gooden C. Mr. Chairman, Ms. C has indicated that she did not need to sign up for this public hearing. She has a spot on the agenda for her case for an introduction next, so she will not be coming forward for speaking.
That's fine, yeah, no problem.
That's okay. And then the next individual signed up to speak will be Leslie Davis.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Leslie Davis, three one seven five Cartersville Road, New Canton, Virginia. I'm a local food animal veterinarian, and I do some work for the Marshals. In terms of the country store and education on agriculture, I think it would be a phenomenal attribute to the community. I think, I've been to their farm, I've eaten their beef, it's wonderful. The farm is tidy and well-kept, which the first time I drove out there, that was a plus for me. In terms of education, I think it's important for people not living in the country to know where their food comes from. About two percent of the population are farmers, and so two percent feed our world. So I think the other ninety-eight percent should know where it comes from. In terms of education, we recently did a little ag awareness day at the barn in Buckingham, and we had a hundred and thirty high school students and fifty adults attended. It was one of the first of its kind, so I think that participation would be good, and I think that the bottom line is, education is golden. And so I think the Marshals will help us do that. So if it was up to me, I would say it's a go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, my saviors. Now, Nikki, I understand we had some emails that were sent to us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do have three emails that I've received today. I did forward them to the commission.
Would you mind reading those for, to put it on the record?
I would be glad to, yes, sir. The first one comes from John and Joyce Banton of nine fifty-two Rock Island Road, Scottsville, and it's addressed to the Buckingham County Planning Commission and members of the Board. "I am writing to express our strong support for the Marshall family and their plans to build a new store to showcase and sell their premier beef. As current clients of Brickyard Bowls LLC, we have had the privilege of seeing firsthand the quality and care that the Marshall family puts into raising their cattle, and we believe this new store will be a valuable addition to our community. Not only will the store provide a direct source for purchasing premium beef, but we are also excited about the potential for this building to serve as a space for local education. The Marshall family has expressed their desire to educate the public on the unique process of raising Wagu cattle, and we fully support this initiative. We believe the store will provide valuable insights to the community about the importance of quality farming practices and sustainable agriculture. In addition, we look forward to the various events the Marshall family hopes to host in the future, which will further engage the community and provide educational opportunities for locals and visitors alike. We trust the Planning Commission will recognize the potential of this project, not only to enhance our local economy, but also to contribute positively to the overall cultural and educational landscape of the area. Thank you for consideration and continued support of local businesses and in community enrichment. We are excited to see the growth and success of the Marshall family's efforts and are proud to be a part of this exciting journey. Sincerely, John W. and Joyce C. Banton." I have another email from Reenie Steele Snotty, and this is to the planning, and her residence is thirty-six oh five Axle Road, Scottsville, Virginia, and this is addressed to the Buckingham County Planning Commission and members of the Board. Her email states, "I am writing to express our strong support for the Marshall family and their plans to build a new store to showcase and sell their premier beef. As current clients of Brickyard Bowls LLC, we have had the privilege of seeing firsthand the quality and care that the Marshall family puts into raising their cattle, and we believe this new store will be a valuable addition to our community. Not only will the store provide a direct source for purchasing premium beef, but we are also excited about the potential for this building to serve as a space for local education. The Marshall family has expressed their desire to educate the public on the unique process of raising Wagu cattle, and we fully support this initiative. We believe the store will provide valuable insights to the community about the importance of quality farming practices and sustainable agriculture. In addition, we look forward to the various events the Marshall family hopes to host in the future, which will further engage the community and provide educational opportunities for locals and visitors alike. We trust the Planning Commission will recognize the potential of this project, not only to enhance our local economy, but also to contribute positively to the overall cultural and educational landscape of the area. Thank you for consideration and continued support of local businesses and community enrichment. We are excited to see the growth and success of the Marshall family's efforts and are proud to be a part of this exciting journey. Sincerely, Reenie Steele Snotty." And, Mr. Chairman, there's one more. This is from James H. Snotty of thirty-six zero five Axle Road, Scottsville. It's addressed to the Planning Commission and the members of the Board. It also states, "I am writing to express our strong support for the Marshall family and their plans to build a new store to showcase and sell their premier beef. As current clients of Brickyard Bowls LLC, we have had the privilege of seeing firsthand the quality and care that the Marshall family puts into raising their cattle, and we believe this new store will be a valuable addition to the community. Not only will the store provide a direct source for purchasing premium beef, but we are also excited about the potential for this building to serve as a space for local education. The Marshall family has expressed their desire to educate the public on the unique process of raising Wagu cattle, and we fully support this initiative. We believe the store will provide valuable insights to the community about the importance of quality farming practices and sustainable agriculture. In addition, we look forward to the various events that the Marshall family hopes to host in the future, which will further engage the community and provide educational opportunities for locals and visitors alike. We trust the Planning Commission will recognize the potential of this project, not only to enhance our local economy, but also to contribute positively to the overall cultural and educational landscape of the area. Thank you for your consideration and continued support of local businesses and community enrichment. We are excited to see the growth and success of the Marshall family's efforts and are proud to be a part of this exciting journey. Sincerely, James H. Snotty, Jr."
Thank you, Nikki, that concludes everything.
Yes, sir.
All right, I will now close the public hearing and turn it back to the Commission. Mr. Marshall, if y'all will come forward to answer some questions, please. The Commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have one. To me, that seven fifty number is too high. I would like to see it more like three hundred, and that's seven fifty, because what we've done in the past, if it's three hundred, the Sheriff's Office and everything, over three hundred, right? It's gotta be, and I would like to see us get that number down a little bit, that, my personal opinion.
Let's see, how the other Commissioners feel. Yes, Pete?
Yeah, I think it's a grand idea. I have no problem with the idea that you're, what you're doing is, I thought, I think very, very good. However, when you start talking about, well, you know, we want seven hundred and fifty people, and we're not worried too much because we think a lot of those are gonna come in buses, therefore the number of buses will be minimal, there's no way to separate people that are coming in on buses, if we were to allow seven hundred and fifty, there's no way to say seven hundred and fifty only in buses, is my point. So if we said seven fifty, you could end up with seven hundred and fifty cars. I've been on the road, I've saw, I saw your property, you know, you don't have a whole lot of people around you, it's a nice piece of property, that, that road is not, I don't think conducive to handling that kind of traffic if an event were to be seven hundred and fifty people and you had all kinds of cars to support it. So like Ms., like Board Member Davis over here, I'm, I'm really concerned about the number of people. What I would, what I'd be willing to support- What I would, what I'd be willing to support, and it's not a motion, but it's something that I'd be willing to support, is a significantly lower number, a significantly lower number. And you mentioned 150. You know, quite frankly, I'm happy with 150. If you needed more, I'd expect you to come here and tell us that your events are requiring a larger base. I don't, I have, I have difficulty with a lot of people in an unlimited number of events, particularly in our area. And I'm respecting the fact that you have, that you have neighbors that have that same sort of concern. So like Mr. Davis, I'm concerned about the number. He looks, he's looking at 300. I'd be willing to tell you that, you know, I'd be happy with 150, and quite frankly, no more than four or five events a year, until you tell us that you need more, and then we could actually evaluate whether or not what you're doing over there and where you live would support a larger number. And I'm saying that just because you came up with the number and you haven't done any canvassing to determine whether or not that number is really necessary for this project. So, Mr. Chairman, I would support a much lower number in a specific number of events per year, not to exceed maybe six.
All right. We haven't talked about the number of events. I think, Mr. Marshall, y'all were referring to 10 to 12, if I recall?
Well, that was, so basically, that was what we had kind of talked about with different, depending upon the event.
Right.
Right. So if you, if you took, in fact, you know, as far as, you know, say, if the store, typically right now, what we're thinking is, is that typical store hours would be open Friday and Saturday, just two days a week, maybe four hours a day. You know, something maybe two to, two to six in the afternoon, Saturday, you know, maybe 10 to 12, something like that, to see how things go. And obviously, if things do like we're hoping, maybe we're, maybe we would be open five days a week, six days a week there, be able to sell the product. As far as tasting events and things like that, to be able to kind of showcase what we're doing, you know, we were thinking many were from 10 to 12 of those events, okay? If we were able to do a little micro wedding of some sort where, you know, someone wants to get married there or do something like that, we were thinking kind of the same thing, maybe 10 or 12 of those at the most. With the educational gatherings, you know, those would probably be less, maybe closer to the number that you're suggesting from that standpoint, because obviously, that would be, we'd have to put a lot of things together from the schools and the line and do all of that to be able to organize something of that size, to be able to have something like that. Now, obviously, that, I wouldn't think there'd probably be more than four or five of those a year for something.
Okay. Well, the concern from both Supervisor Davis as well as Commissioner Kapanowski really doesn't apply to your smaller crowds, your micro weddings, that's not a problem. In operation of the store, certainly not. So I think what we could do is concentrate on your education and the others that might be larger events. And then we can, I really don't, I hate to handicap you on the number of education events because I think it's so important for the public to know where things start. I mean, it's so many generations, especially some of the younger, they, you know, they, they don't know. They think it comes from a supermarket. Well, it does, but it's a long ways from the field of the supermarkets. So I think it's very important to have the education ones. But it's been through, Mr. Davis suggested 300. Pete was a little bit more conservative, 150. To do, to accomplish what you want, 750 has certainly got to be reduced. Do you have a number based on your business?
I mean, with his, with Dennis's suggestion of 300, and then that would eliminate any kind of, you know, needing the sheriff or anything like that out there, I think we'd probably be okay with dropping it down to his.
300?
To the 300 mark.
You want 300 and then 150 that the county needs to be notified that you're going to have an event? I mean, that's sort of what we did with the couple of the applications, or is 300 fine?
I'm good with the 300. The 750 is just, is too much.
Well, if they can, you know, if things take off and work for them, and hopefully, that's going to be the situation. You know, you always have the opportunity to come back and state your case, and we can increase those levels. Yes, go ahead, George.
I have a comment, not so much about the number. The 300, I'm good with two, but also looking at the number of events. Because if you just say 10 or 15 or 12, we have to consider the seasons. You're not going to be able to access the kids so much, the number of kids during summer. And, but that leaves the spring and the fall when they're back in kids. Winter, I just don't envision your store being open on a continuous basis. So we'd really need to adjust, and when we do this, consider the seasons that you're going to be open to. And I don't know about your beef business, how you conduct that, but you sell at farmers' markets. When are the farmers' markets open?
The farmers' markets run year-round.
They run year-round. That you service.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so most of, most of what we're servicing right now is the Northern Virginia and Richmond market with their product right now. Now, I do have several customers, as the testimonies, you know, stated. I do have several customers that come and buy the product on, you know, every two or three weeks from me right now. And that, and that's why we're seeing the need for having the store location there that would be open year-round for people to be able to do that.
Okay, so you don't, that, so the crowds, the crowds and the educational part is one thing, but the store being open year-round is something that you do envision?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and as right now, we're just projecting on being open to, basically Friday and Saturday for maybe four hours each day. It's kind of what we're thinking we'll, we'll do right now. But obviously, if the demand increases, we'd want that flexibility to maybe increase hours or even add extra days in there for that, for the store.
I think to answer also, one of Ms. Patterson's questions was, I think she had asked something about how it was going to help with jobs. We would definitely have to hire someone to work in the store full-time. We would have to hire probably a few people to do the agritours as well. Shane and myself, we can't do it all. So.
And also, too, is, can I, can I address one of her concerns as well about people wandering on her property?
Yes, that was a question I was going to ask you, so.
Because, so right now, that entire property is fenced. So it has a high tensile, a high fixed knot, high tensile fence that surrounds it. So for, for, for someone to get onto her property, they can only access, access that on the north side of my property. And they'd have to climb over the fence through the cattle to be able to get to that property. From a secure standpoint, I don't think someone would be just wandering in that direction onto their property.
Okay.
And all these events as well will be ticketed events, so people are going to have to pay, you know, for these agritours besides the schools. You know, they're going to have, they're going to have to purchase a ticket online or purchase a ticket at the store itself. So we will always know how many people are going to be at these events. And if it makes everyone feel better, I can send out emails and give the dates of when things are happening and how many tickets we've sold.
That might not be a bad suggestion to work with Nikki on that.
They have concerns. There's going to be an event on, you know, October the 28th, and we've sold 10 tickets.
Okay. So any other concerns with the operation of the store? I didn't think that was an issue.
One other question.
Yes, go ahead, George.
During the public comment, there was a mention of a conservation easement. And my only question is, is that something that they were thinking about? Or have they already, are they in the process and have applied for that conservation easement?
That was the Pattersons, right?
That was the Pattersons, right. So.
I can't answer that. I assume that they, if I remember correctly, I think they were in the process of doing it.
You think they're in the process of applying?
I think that's correct.
Or were they considering applying? That's, that's going to be.
To go back, the Commission doesn't have an issue with the store operation and/or the micro weddings, correct? Because you're going to have a smaller crowd, not the large event. All right, so Commissioner Kapanowski, as well as Supervisor Davis sort of indicated, they'd like to have a number of the larger events. Do you want to suggest a number for these larger events? Again, with the education, I hate to put a number on that because it's, I think it's so important. But the other larger events, it may have as many as 200 or 300 people. I don't want to handicap them if it's, if the Commission wants to go this through, so. Any thoughts on that from the Commissioners?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Steve.
What do you think you could get by with on the people, actually?
As far as the number?
Right. If we did drop it down, I would just.
I mean, like I said, I'm not opposed to doing the 300. That would, you know, help us eliminate anything with the 300. And, you know, obviously, those, that number typically will dictate towards the larger educational events that we would be putting on. That the other items and things that we're talking about doing is going to be smaller numbers, 40, 50 people. Really, we're just wanting to get this larger number in there so that it, just like with, with Dr. Leslie stating, they just had an event that had 200 people there, 150 kids and 50 other people. So you figure they hit, they went over, you know, Pete's mark of that, of what he suggested. So, you know, if this thing is able to do what we're wanting it to do, you know, I don't want to say 200, and then we have to turn people away if it is more than 200 people showing up. That's why I'm not opposed to dropping it to the 300 for those, for those larger educational events.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if there's a way to separate that, but I mean, if you're looking at the possibility of doing these things with the schools, if there was a way to create an exception for those kinds of visits where you might have four busloads of kids come in, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to the education thing. I think it's fantastic. But the problem I have is when you in general say, you know, we're going to allow 750 or 300 or whatever it is, you're opening the door for any kind of visitation up to that number of people. So in respect to the concerns that you have from your neighbors, let's say it's not an education thing. Let's say it's just an event that you're going to have, and you're allowing 300 people in there, and, you know, God forbid, they all come in one car, you got an issue, all right? At least you're going to have an issue with your neighbors. So my, my point being, if there was a way to separate it, to say, okay, for educational events, you have some sort of a limit, but in any other event, you know, that you can, I mean, you sound to me like you'd be happy with somewhere between 75 and 100 people in these other events. That's a manageable number, in my view, so long as you have the ability to bring a busload of kids in that might exceed, you know, that wouldn't exceed 300, but at least be up to that level. Is there some way to create a condition like that? I mean, I don't know if that becomes too confusing, or, you know, I'd have to ask Nikki, I guess.
It would be difficult to, I mean, you could put it on there, but it would be difficult to enforce.
But what if we said something to the effect that anything between 75 and 300 people would be limited in the number of events per year? So anything under 75, if you wanted to have, you know, your, your store operating five days, 12 months? I mean, it seems to me that that, you know, that should cover some.
Well, that, I think what you're asking, the number that you're setting, if you, if you agree, if you set 300, which the Marshals have agreed to, you've already, I mean, that's the maximum. The store operation certainly will not have that because they'll, you know, be coming and going.
Right.
Micro weddings, not either. Really, only concern would be special events and the education.
Right. So can you separate that? I mean, can you say special events not to exceed 300 or what? I mean, I don't know how you do all that.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's going to be, again, I mean, even if you did it, how would you enforce it if you don't have an enforcement mechanism, so?
That's the point. So I guess that's why I'm kind of advocating we go to a lower number. I mean, you know, I said 150. You, you know, somebody mentioned 300, and they did that because of the Sheriff's Department. I mean, I looked at the road. I looked at your facility. I don't see any problem with the facility over there. But it just concerns me that we would have a large number of people that could conceivably come, everyone in their own transfer, you know, they're, and they're using their own transportation. So you're, you're not talking about busloads of kids. Well, you got a busload of kids. I don't have a problem with that. You could end up with four busloads of kids. You got, you know, 200 kids. You want to educate them. That's tremendous, okay? It's, it's the, it's, it's the 200 or 300 people that are going to come in, that you're allowing to come in, that are really not coming in busloads, that are concerning your neighbors, and that's my concern. And I don't know how you, I don't know how you control that. I mean, so I mean, you know, I'm okay to go with whatever the, you know, the Commission wants to do here, but I'm glad you're in agreement to go to a lower level. But even at 300 people, you're talking a lot of people on that road if they're not in busloads.
Do you, at this point, do you have the parking to accommodate 300 people, Mr. Marshall?
If, if we had an event of that, of that nature with the fields and things that we have, we can open up pastures.
Okay.
That's no, that's, that's no problem.
I know the educational events would be held during the day, correct?
Correct, yes.
Your other.
Even the agritour, yeah, even the agritours and things, so most of those things would be, would probably take place, you know, like in an afternoon or something, like 1:00 to 3:00. It's, it's not like it would be an all-day event. A visitation type thing. People normally would come for one to two hours and place, you know, hopefully, we have some wagyu for them to taste and stuff like that, and.
I mean, the only, the only event that I, that I could think of that would actually be held in the evening might be a micro wedding. And a micro wedding is less than 20 people.
Yeah, that's small.
I mean, that's, you know, the cooking classes, the educational classes, the store being open is all going to be during, you know, daylight hours.
Daylight hours.
And so he can get up and feed cows in the morning anyway.
Going to say, I mean, for a county that is so proud of our agriculture, I think agritourism is a natural progression. It's something that a lot of our farmers and down from farm to table is such a big thing now. I think it's something we should be proud of. I think we're getting kind of deep in the weeds, talking about what seasons they can operate, what hours they can operate, how many cars can come, what audience they're marketing to, be it farmers or students. I think we should just set a number, make that their decision. It's their business to run as long as we're comfortable with the traffic and the number that we set.
Any other opinions from the Commissioners? As far as y'all, I don't think we have any other questions, so y'all keep going and sit down. All right, we've got, they've agreed to 300 as a maximum. The store will operate, you know, as needed, which is not going to be a big thing, as well as the micro weddings. That's going to be very small. Education, certainly, I think everybody's in favor of that, so it's just these other couple of events. You, what is the pleasure of the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move it on to the Board of Supervisors for a maximum attendance of 300.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just quick, Nikki, are you going to also limit the number of events a year?
Well, what do you want to limit, I guess is my question, because?
Well, if you're going to go to 300, that's a large event. I'd, you know, something less than 12. Otherwise, you're doing it monthly. Something less than 52, otherwise, you're doing it weekly. What, maybe eight to 10 a year?
I can make that part of my motion if you want.
Okay, well.
I mean, with everybody else's opinion.
I feel like in the past, haven't we done it, you know, like, if it's under a certain amount of people, you know, it doesn't matter. You can have unlimited under a certain amount of people, but if you go over a certain amount of people, then there's a limit on the number of events of those size you can have per year. And I feel like we've done that on some of these event applications.
That, you're correct. We have, where we've set a limitation, but it's because it's been larger numbers. We've.
I mean, I don't think you want to say you can only have 10 events a year, max 300, and then that takes away from a bunch of small little events you could have that really aren't that big of a deal. But you just don't want 300 people there every week, you know?
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Now, we have a motion to approve this in second with a 300 maximum.
Can I back up on my motion and make, make another motion with this Thompson? So can we do, this is my opinion, and we can go with it however, but say 10 events a year with a maximum of 300, under 300, and the small events under 100, there's no restriction on? Can we do that? Can we do that?
Mr. President Marsh, y'all need to come forward. You've got a business plan and that is, uh, we're kicking around.
I don't want to do nothing to hinder them, but I.
That's, that's what my question is going to be.
Myself, too.
And actually, I was glad you called back up because I was with him, you know, with what he was suggesting there. To me, Dennis has got exactly what we're trying to do here and, and JD kind of brought that up as well. This is not, we're not going to have three hundred people at every event, that we're not planning on doing that. The only reason we're doing, asking for the three hundred is for the educational events that we would want to put on that may be six or seven a year. Okay, so most of what we're going, going to do is going to probably be fifty people or less.
Okay.
That's what I, I don't want to be limited if we, if we can help that, I don't want to be limited on those because obviously we're trying to do agritourism. We're trying to gen, generate some revenue here to help facilitate all of this as well. So if it, if it limits me, it's going to make it tough on us to try to do what we want to do.
Right, that, that was my question, just don't want to hand, you know, change your business plan, get you, you put some time into it. So Mr. Davis's, uh, motion was ten events up to three hundred thou, three hundred people.
I hope it ain't three hundred thousand.
Don't look great away there, three hundred, excuse me. But then you said a hundred unlimited?
Under a hundred.
Under a hundred limit.
Okay.
That'll fit y'all's plan?
Yes, we're perfect with that, thank you.
You can sit back down, then we'll, we'll discuss. All right, we have a, a new motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second, any further discussion on this? So we got three hundred, ten events, up to ten events, up to three hundred people. Any events that are under a hundred people, they can have as many as they want, as long as you understand what you're voting on. Okay? All right, if no further discussion, we'll, we'll take the vote. All right, that passes unanimously. And you'll be going to the board of supervisors, Nikki in December.
December ninth, at six P M.
Thank you. All right, Nikki, that brings us to our new business, introduction of the, um, S U P for Deborah Blake.
Yes, this is case twenty-four, S U P three fifty-one. Our applicant is Deborah Blake of fourteen sixty-seven Hunley Branch Road, Scottsville. The request is being made on the following property, which is tax map twenty-five, parcel eleven. It contains approximately sixty-eight point ninety-nine acres. And as I mentioned, this is located at fourteen sixty-seven Hunley Branch Road, Scottsville, District Five. The zoning for this district is currently agricultural A-one. And the applicant is, um, applying for a special use permit to construct and operate a private grass airstrip and hangar. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. We do have eleven conditions that were, um, recently approved on a permit request, um, identical to Ms. Blake's this evening. Um, and you'll see that the number five, all commercial aircraft is prohibited from use and storage. That was added to the last one for, uh, Mr. D'Amio. I do believe that Ms. Blake is here patiently waiting her turn this evening to address questions and concerns. If you have any, um, if it were to be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request, your next meeting will be December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M.
All right, Ms. Blake, would you come forward and say the full name, address, just give us a quick overview of what you want?
I am Deborah Blake, um, applicant at fourteen sixty-seven Hunley Branch, Scottsville.
Oh, yes, please step.
Don't be afraid of the mic. There we go. Two, four, five, nine, zero.
Okay, just give us a quick narrative, I know you want to build an airstrip, so just, just a overview real quick.
Sure, uh, we have a rural property, uh, in which I have a husband and daughter, my daughter specifically, uh, wanting to become a commercial airline pilot and, uh, wanting to use, uh, all aircraft. Thank you, thank you, to be able to, uh, help with some of those flight hours.
Okay, very good. Uh, questions from the commissioners? Steve, I believe you have one.
A couple of things. Uh, what size aircraft will you be using?
I believe it's called a Piper Cub.
Piper Cub.
Yeah, they're real small.
Do you know what it takes to land and start, you know, what you need for a runway? Because I looked, what I saw was thirteen hundred feet, and that seems a little, little small to, to land or take off, maybe for an airplane to take off.
I think the super Cubs are rated for, you can take off and, and land in fifty. Not that, I, you know, not that they're good enough to do that, but, um, it depends on air conditions, et cetera, uh, when you land. So it's currently just a grass strip now, you're just, we're only going to take as much space as we need to land. That's, that's really all there is.
I can't believe you can take off in fifty feet, though.
I can't either, I haven't seen it myself, but.
I'd like to get a clarification on that from.
That's the advert, that's the advertisement on the, on the Piper Cub website, so.
Well, what, uh, what is Steve's question?
Certainly, uh, six hundred feet is, is the, the norm.
Okay, so.
Thirteen, six hundred feet is the norm for a Piper Cub, yeah. So thirteen hundred feet is basically just a little over twice that.
So you, you've got more than you need, then?
Yes.
Have you cleared that with the F F A, F A, F A A?
Yes, the Piper Cubs are cleared for a certain length aircraft.
They know that you've had, you can use that thirteen hundred, they don't require two thousand, because we had one in here a month ago. I think they require two thousand feet.
Depends on the aircraft.
Okay.
Yes, Pete?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, so let me, I think I missed the first part of your, your conversation. You, you're putting this airstrip in for personal use, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
And you're going to have how many aircraft?
First one, then maybe two.
And that's, those are family-owned and family-operated?
Yes.
Aircraft, and are you one of the pilots?
No. No, uh, husband and daughter.
Okay, so, and, and did I hear you say something, they're, they're looking to become commercial pilots, but they're using this as a training ground for themselves?
My daughter is, yes, she's sixteen.
Okay, so you're not intending to do any other outside training for other people, correct?
Oh, no, no, no.
So this is strictly a family, personal use thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Yes, go ahead. I've got, uh, just want to address the dumpster again. We dealt with this on the last one and decided that private airplanes don't create a lot of trash, so I think we could probably strike that from the requirements, should this move ahead.
We did that last time, Nikki, if you recall, just a house cleaning. You know, one of the conditions was having a dumpster, you're not going to have that much trash, so. Any other comments, questions? You may sit down, and thank you. Which pleasure of the commission?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we move this on to a public hearing.
I have a motion, do we have a second? Any further discussion? The, now, we'll now vote. You do vote, okay, they went through unanimously, so. You'll be moving to public hearing in December, the sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yes, sir. At six P M., Ms. Blake.
All right, that now introduction of a special use permit, Jacqueline C.
Yes, our next case is twenty-four, S U P three fifty-two. Our applicant is the Gooden Family Trust and Jacqueline Gooden C. is representing in this, the face of this application. The property on which the permit is being requested is tax map ninety-two, parcel one, three hundred nineteen point eighty-seven acres. Tax map ninety-two, parcel twenty-six, thirty-five point oh six acres. Tax map ninety-two, parcel thirty-one, six point four one acres. This is located at seven, at or near seventeen seventy-nine Shelton Store Road, Buckingham, Virginia, two three nine two one, in the Slate River Magisterial District. All of these parcels are zoned A-one agricultural, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing and operating a country store, retail store for items, including but not limited to general merchandise, E V stations, et cetera, and event center, events to include but not limited to glamping, dry camp sites, nature trails, micro events, for instance, uh, community meetings, special programs, tours, et cetera, for up to two hundred and fifty attendees. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. You will see the same eleven conditions attached to this request here. Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing? And if so, the next meeting scheduled for the commission is December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Let's see, if you would, just say the full name, address, and give us just a quick overview.
My name is Jacqueline Gooden C. I, um, am farm manager of seventy-nine, of seventeen seventy-nine Shelton Store Road, which is in Buckingham County. I reside in Chesterfield County.
Okay.
Um, good evening, Chairman Bigfoot and the members of the board. I will, I am requesting you to consider the opportunity for this area to be, um, allowed to have agritourism events, which were, comes in a broad scope of events. And, um, we're asking for a, although you've already discussed, discussed maximum number of individuals, we do not want more than two hundred and fifty individuals as a maximum event. We're going to focus on the edu, the history of the area which this farm was developed, the historical issues there. We're going to, we want to focus on educating the students and provide opportunities for individuals to learn about agriculture and the history of Buckingham's agriculture and actually, and the history of the African-American contribution to Buckingham's not only agricultural system, but its educational system. Some of the other items we will, um, we want to be presenting to the community and offer, um, glamping events. We would like to offer, um, workshops on astronomy. We would offer workshops, um, to students. We definitely will include the, uh, Buckingham Educational System. We want to include the students in these events into, um, technology, drone flight, drone skills. I am a certified drone pilot. And, um, as far as my agricultural background, I've, um, I actually completed Virginia Tech's Valor Program on the fourth class, which is, um, Virginia Agricultural Leaders Obtaining Results. So we believe our, um, family trust and the nineteen oh seven legacy farm, we believe that if we have the opportunity to reopen, um, ancestral store as an event center and to provide educational opportunities, um, agritour, tourism opportunities to the area, we will contribute to the economic development of Buckingham's agricultural system and beyond.
Okay, thank you, Ms. C., appreciate that. Uh, I'll turn it over to the commission for questions. I did have one, most of your events will also be held during the day, correct?
That's correct, except for, I did say astronomy workshops. And that, again, um, has, will be at night.
Of course, yeah. And, and I, I know you've got plenty of area, you, have you already have your parking developed or, or have a spot picked out to accommodate up to two hundred and fifty people?
Yes, sir, we have looked at that and, um, we have looked at that. We have open pastures enough, we have like forty acres of open pasture on one plot of land. And what we were thinking of that we would provide, because it's not where the main events may happen, we will have transportation to the main events.
Okay, that's, uh, questions I had, I'll, any other commissioners have questions at this time? Yes, Pete?
What, yes, sir. What is, what is, I may be the only one here that doesn't understand, but what is a glamping? What is glamping?
Glamping is.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, glamping is you're camping, but you have the amenities of a five-star hotel.
So, so what are, are you going to put up tents or something, or?
Yes, yes and no. The, a glamping is on the individual's, um, basis. If you have a camper that you want to bring in, your camper is equipped with high-end items, that would be your choice. We just call it glamping.
So if you're going to do this with campers and whatever these people use, how many do you intend to have on your property?
For a glamping event or a camping event, actually, we do not, we visualize no more than, um, fifteen, twen, fifteen to twenty at one time, the property.
I have another question for you, I took a ride down, um, Shelton Store Road, there's a, before I got to your property, there was an, it looked to me like a very old store, there's a flag hanging from it. Is that Shelton Store, is that the store?
That's correct, that is Shelton Store, and we are in the process, because it's a historical, um, structure, we're in the process of working with the Buckingham Historical, um, Society, uh, re, during that building. And the quest or the vision is to open it up, not only to provide maybe some, um, merchandise, but actually to be the community center that it was when it was in operation.
Nice that you sold some books out there, too, about the history of the area, but you know, it's interesting. I, I almost took a black and white picture because it's so picturesque, I mean, it was an old building, really kind of interesting, yeah.
Yes, and it has been, um, I had, um, from Nelson County, historical review of that building.
Yeah.
And we, um, where actually our grandfather built that particular building and what was the original structure plus the adding on of the building.
Okay.
It has not operated since eight, um, nineteen, approximately nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five, but it served as not only the economic development in that area, but it also served as a community center.
Did you say it was opened around nineteen oh seven, is that when that started?
Um, the, um, the store itself is circa nineteen thirteen, when it was opened originally. Purchase of the land was in nineteen oh seven.
Okay, well, thank you, that was really interesting, thank you.
Thank you.
But you're still looking at a maximum of maybe fifteen to twenty campers or tents or whatever you're going to do.
Correct, for camping events, if that was to occur, camping events.
And would then, would you also have an, if you did do these two hundred and fifty people events, you know, have you heard us talk about the other, the other situation? Would you be interested in, in, in telling us, you know, if there was a limitation to the number of events that you intend to?
Well, before I heard the conversation earlier, I have in my notes maximum two fifty, uh, attendees. And those events would possibly be at, uh, limited to maybe five or six, uh, events during the calendar year. And they would be more in conjunction with celebrations such as the Fourth of July celebration, our Juneteenth celebration, how, um, maybe an event Thanksgiving, Christmas, that's the way we will.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's very interesting, and I agree, I think those are the questions, I appreciate your answers, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Steve, you have a.
I have one. You said you're going to reopen the store and, uh, put it back in operation. Will you be selling any gas? Would you have the gas pumps or anything like that? Because that may involve.
No, um, that did not come up as far as having gas at that particular location. We are actually looking at E Vs. We have done some calculation of the number of E Vs that come through Buckingham County, the number of mileage that we have. We have, um, data on, um, on how many are in Buckingham County and surrounding counties. And we have data on how many are in charging stations in Virginia itself. So, um, what we envision that individuals that would be coming into that area, even though it's kind of not on a main highway, and we also have individuals in the family that have E Vs. And they can, they make the comment, we would come in the area, however, we would drive that vehicle, but there's no local charging station there. So we envision individuals that may come for any events, may have an E V, and they will be able to charge their, um, car while they're at the event. Now, there are actually three types of E V stations, and we're going to focus on type two and three eventually as part of revamping that area and the store area. But thank you for the consideration of gas because of fossil fuel. Um, the store originally sold Shell gas for several years. It was recognized by the company, the Shell Company Corporation.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions? You may sit down Nikki.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
You may ask for their questions, answers. No questions, uh, which is a pleasure of the commission, you want to move this forward to public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, um, in consideration of what was said here, if there was some sort of a documentation that would include the five to six events up to two hundred and fifty, and like Mr. Davis said, uh, anything below a hundred, let's say unlimited to handle your situation, uh, and no more than say fifteen campers, I'd be willing to make a recommendation that we move this to a public hearing.
Making that into motion Pete?
Well, I, if...
I guess we'd need to discuss that.
I'd like to have a discussion, I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Nikki, would you come back, ma'am, we want to, have to ask you a couple of questions. I know y'all have got a very formal business plan, just so I wanna, wanna make sure what we're suggesting will fit with your uh, plan. Uh, Pete, I'm sorry, would you repeat what you want?
So, the two hundred and fifty, you're saying five to six events a year are fine? And uh, maybe fifteen, at most fifteen campers, I think that'd be fine. If that fit your uh, business plan, I'd be willing to support a motion that would move that on to a, a public hearing with those conditions.
Yes, um, that's susceptible, and if I have to come back, I'm available.
Excellent.
Okay, so your, your motion is gonna be, put a number on the, the maximum events you said?
Yeah, it'd be uh, six events at two fifty maximum, anything below a hundred would be unlimited. And uh, and, and as far as the glamping is concerned, a maximum fifteen uh, campers or tents. And, and... If you need more, you can come on back.
I'm willing to do that.
Is that acceptable Nikki?
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay, very good. All right, that is a motion now.
You making a motion, I'll second it.
Let me make the motion then, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. All right, any further discussion before we vote? Okay, we're gonna take a vote. All right, that moves forward with majority, because the choice had to abstain of course. All right, uh, you'll be going to a public hearing in December the sixteenth.
Is that family?
Sixteenth.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
All right, that brings us Nikki to the request from the Board of Supervisors to review, review potential zoning map amendment at the industrial park.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, um, this was included and I have provided some supplemental information to you this evening. There's a, a handout um, there explaining what happened. I'll just read over um, the memo to the members of the planning commission. Um, this memo sets forth the Board of Supervisors' action and request that was taken at its November twenty twenty-four regular meeting concerning the property in the industrial park. The Board is asking the planning commission to consider a recommendation to rezone portions of the industrial park so that the private schools will be allowed as a matter of right. That means a rezoning to a VC one, which is Village Center. The Board referred specifically to the northern two-thirds portion of the property. The soccer field, as you all are aware, has been rezoned uh, to recreational access recently, and that portion of the property is no longer involved. The action and motion is as follows. It was unanimously carried by the Board to send to the planning commission for recommendation on rezoning the northern two-thirds portion of the industrial park from NC one, it's currently Neighborhood Commercial, to Village Center, VC one. This will allow the Central Virginia Christian School to construct the school as a matter of right. There is a diagram showing the location of the Christian School currently, the soccer field, the portion of the property that is um, standalone, that's James River Equipment, and then the new seven point nine three acres. Um, there's a background that continues on page two. The Board has contracted with the Central Virginia Christian School or buyer to sell acreage in the industrial park. How much of that contract include? A, purchase price of six thousand dollars per acre being sold. B, acreage, the acreage is currently seven point four one three, and there's a preliminary drawing attached. Access, the school will access this property via, via Industrial Park Road at an easement off of Industrial Park Road along the boundary of the property being sold. There's a road maintenance agreement will be, and it will be associated with this property and the use of the road. The maintenance agreement allocations are to be based on use. A road maintenance agreement is currently associated with the property that the school owns. Failure to zone the property to allow for private school is a reason for termination by the seller or buyer. There's a closing date for this contract, not later than April fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Part of the contract provision calls for a zoning adjustment to allow a private school as a matter of right on the property being considered. It is generally known that the school is negotiating with James River to buy or use the other property of James River in addition to the property acquired from the county. Projected timeline of action required by the Board and Planning Commission, you will see there are dates there. November twelfth, the Board of Supervisors uh, took action to set a public hearing to consider the sale of the property to the school and initiate a request to the planning commission to rezone the property. November eighteenth, of course, the planning commission is asked to review this request and consider setting a public hearing to rezone the property. That would be December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, should you decide to do so. Um, the following future dates are December ninth, are the next Board of Supervisors, where the public hearing for the sale of the um, seven point four one three acres would take place. December twenty-third, uh, which is actually, that date is now December sixteenth for the planning commission. That will be when your public hearing would be um, set, if you were to set one this evening. January thirteenth, if you were able to have your recommendation prepared, um, as a result of a public hearing on the sixteenth, that would go back to the Board of Supervisors, January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Board would then move forward, you know, if these things fall into place for a, a public hearing, February tenth. And uh, there could be further approvals by February twenty-eighth, March the tenth, and an ultimate closing of April fifteenth. This is a tentative um, guideline for a timetable. While we're diving into this, let's take a look at what the Village Center District's um, purpose and permitted uses are. Uh, we do have a synopsis here. The purpose of the Village Center District is to encourage cluster development of residential, commercial, and public uses to include and provide rural residents with convenient access to community services, shopping, employment, and to create a sense of a community identity. Permitted uses um, within a VC one, agriculture provided that there's no structure containing poultry or livestock and no storage of manure or odor or dust-producing substances. Adult retirement community, adult assisted living churches, parish houses, dwellings, single-family, fraternal organizations, um, garages, home-based service business, manufactured homes, multifamily houses, parks and playgrounds, offices, public and private recreation facilities, retreat, retreat centers, schools, public and private, signage, minor subdivisions only, and it does go further into the type of businesses that would be allowed. They don't have any outside storage or displays, operate between the hours of seven and seven, and no more than sixty trips for customers, and do not use delivery trucks greater than, than two axles. Give us some examples, and it goes on to let you know that following uses shall be prevented by, permitted only by special use permit, and this would be any use which may be permitted by an SUP in either the A-one or B-one district and is not set forth above as a permitted use in the Village Center um, district. It does tell you about the um, area regulations for the minimum lot size, if it has public or um, private um, sewer, along with the setbacks um, within that district for a building as well. You'll see the very final page shows the um, seven point four one three preliminary drawing of the property um, to potentially be sold to the Christian School.
Okay. Uh, discussion from the commission.
Chairman?
Yes.
Still a question? Seems to me, uh, let me, and let me get this clear. First of all, did, there was an additional ten acres that were supposed to be sold to the school, is that correct?
The, there was discussion in the last couple of years of um, the piece of property. Um, the ongoing conversations have led to this seven point four one three acreage. This is, this is the only um, property at this time that is offered in a contract by and between the county and the Christian School.
Okay, so that's still on the table and they, they've yet to decide whether to buy it or what?
I don't have any knowledge of ten acres or what's happened, I only have...
Well, I'm talking about the seven acres.
The original ten acres was behind the school, and there were some wetland issues and all, and it didn't suit for them to build on, so...
But there was no contract.
They wanted the piece to the side behind James River, and that's how...
Okay, all right, but whatever additional property they wanted is now theirs, correct? I mean, you, you sold it to them, so they've got enough...
Well, it ain't closed yet, we ain't sold it yet, but...
But I mean, if they get that property, then that's...
That's what they want to build a high school.
All right, so the rest of this change has to do with, I mean, we've gone through this, this was a heck of a, this was a real, real problem, a couple of years ago when I first got onto the Board, this whole thing with regard to this industrial property. Are we now saying it's no longer gonna be an industrial center? It's basically gonna be uh, a resi- a multi-purpose residential thing? And what about, I thought there was a, I thought there was a grant that was given to Buckingham at one point in time to support an industrial center, this property. I mean, what does that, am I wrong or, and what happens if I'm right to that particular grant?
The only grant that I'm aware of was for the roadway development um, for Industrial Park Road, and I do believe that the county actually had to pay that grant back. It was not accepted into the um, V dot roadway system. But the only, and the only grant that I am aware of is that particular grant.
So, if we decided to rezone this, would you, is, is it the idea, the county then would go back to the developer and have that developer come back the same way the developer came first time? You know, is that, is that the idea? I mean, what are we doing with this property? It's no longer gonna be considered industrial?
The request from the Board of Supervisors is to take a look at the zoning currently so that um, schools, private and public would be allowed by right. The request directly from the Board is to look at rezoning the two-thirds of this portion from Neighborhood Commercial to a Village Center. That is the information that I have, and that is the, the motion and the action that was taken at the Board meeting last week.
Well, Mr. Chairman, at one point in time, you and I both were involved in this economic development thing, this, a year or so ago. And it was discontinued at, at, at the point in time when, when we uh, when we elected new Board members. I don't know why, but anyway it was. And at that point in time, there was a lot of discussion about how we would be able to use this industrial property because essentially, one of the issues for Buckingham is not having enough commercial businesses coming in here to, to support us tax-wise. In other words, the object behind having that property available to a commercial industry was that you could get a much better tax base. Now, I'll be honest with you, I haven't heard a thing, and, and there has been no meetings since the election of the new Board members uh, with regard to economic development. And I believe this property has something to do with those decisions. So, if we're gonna rezone this, if we're gonna make a recommendation to rezone this, I'd like to know, as an individual taxpayer, as well as a, a resident in, in the county, why is it that we're not discussing, again, economic opportunities on a commercial basis for this land? Um, since that was a real firestorm issue the last time this thing came up? Chairman?
Understanding concern, I, I guess my question to you to follow with Pete is, is reading in the narrative there, fail to zone the property to allow for private schools, reason for termination by the seller or buyer, are they referring to just the seven plus acres? Or are they referring to the whole two-thirds of the thing?
What, what the Board's plan is, and I, I'm, I'm speaking for me, not for the other Board members, but we didn't wanna have to come back every time that, wanna do something with this land and we gotta rezone it again. The zoning committee, planning commission's gotta do it every time. So, if we take care of two-thirds of it at one pop, which it allows for businesses, and if you read all the uses in the zoning permitted, permitted uses, it's not a problem, but it also allows for churches to be built there, private schools. Industrial, I don't know what you're gonna do in Buckingham County, because Zion's Crossroads gets everything, because sixty-four is there and fifteen is there. Y'all know this as well as I do. Farmville gets it because of four sixty. And manufacturing is not gonna come where they gotta get way off the big highway to get to you. It's just, it, it doesn't work. I mean, Louisa right now, y'all see that Louisa's getting two big Amazon deals over there to set their tax base for the next fifty years. But that, that's where I took in, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the zoning, is take care of it at one pop instead of having to come back every time, redo it every time. It's just, that's what I gather.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead Pete.
Uh, Mr. Davis, I, I think, you know, and I respect that, I don't think you're ever gonna put any kind of heavy manufacturing in that area. We talked about that extensively. I mean, the, the, the question was, will we, would we have been able to put commercial businesses in there, such as warehousing, not, not much different than what Amazon's doing over in Louisa. The point I'm getting at is, may, maybe, maybe that wouldn't have been a, a practical use for something that large. But when we were looking, when we were working, and Mr. Bigford knows this, when we were working with the Economic Development Committee, there were ideas being tossed on the table for light industry, for commercial, for commercial expansion in those businesses. That discussion, those discussions stopped once the election took place and we had new Board members, unfortunately. Uh, I've made mention of that uh, both at the Board meeting and at this meeting. I don't know why it stopped, should never have stopped. I think those people that were gathered were pretty interesting individuals, they were smart individuals. And quite, and I'm not talking about myself, I'll exempt myself from that, but there, there were some fairly smart people on that, on that committee that, that had a good deal of business acumen, and they were coming up with ideas, and it stopped cold. So, to have us go back and rezone this thing without fully understanding what really are the opportunities for commercial development in that, on that property, without having investigated that fully, at least to someone's satisfaction, is, is to me a concern. And that's, that, again, my opinion. Mr. Davis, Mr. Chairman, that's basically where I'm coming from.
Understand. Who, my question was never answered, is, is, is it part of the contract with the school purchasing that this larger block be changed? I know Bookie was saying they're just trying to do that to the Board of Supervisors.
I understand it, but as far as the school is concerned, we have to rezone the, the acres that they're buying from us.
You're right.
To be, allow them to build a school.
The, the other is, is not, not required by the contract, that was what I was asking, okay. All right, further discussion from the mission? Now, you've got uh... Oops, sorry about that, hit to a paper. So, we're being asked to change the zoning for the school acreage, the seven point four one three, but then also the additional acreage.
Two-thirds portion.
Do we have a figure on how much that is of the additional?
Of the two-thirds portion of the um...
These roughly sixty acres?
I would say maybe seventy acres, that's off the top of my head.
Just so everybody understands what, what, what the Board of Supervisors has requested of us.
So, we need to rezone to seven point four, is that what we're looking at?
Well, that's, that's a requirement for the sale, uh, for the school. The additional, I, I sort of broke it in two because additional acreage is uh, not involved in the school buying that, that tract. But the Board of Supervisors is asking us to change, that's why I asked how much acres it was. Roughly maybe sixty acres that will be changing from NC one to Village Center. And I understand the rationale behind it. I guess I sort of agree with Pete a little bit is uh, that gonna limit the potential in the future of, of bringing something in if we go back to uh, Village Center versus NC.
Sorry, could you repeat that for me, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'm, I'm sort of just talking off the top of my head, but anyway, I'll ask you that question.
Maybe I should...
If we, the additional acres, not, not the school, but that's fine, no problem with that. The additional roughly sixty acres, if we go to Vi- Vi- uh, Village Center... The additional roughly sixty acres, if we go to Vi- Vi- uh, Village Center, uh, from NC, doesn't that narrow the possibility of what we can bring into the industrial park?
If, if you were to take this two-thirds portion and take it to a Village Center.
Right, that acreage is going to be changed. So that sort of narrows what your options are in the future for possible bringing in, correct?
It could. One, um, could state that, uh, Village Center would incorporate, um, a residential and mixed-use, um, businesses that are, uh, more consistent with, um, some of those that currently exist in this area, antique shops, gift shops, daycare, um, beauty, um, parlors, hair, um, care, those types of things that would be allowed. But it would certainly, um, without, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily limit or exclude. Those particular businesses could then be viewed on a special use permit basis if the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors saw fit to amend, um, the SUP portion of a Village Center for other businesses.
Thank you, Nikki. That, that sort of clears it up for me. All right. Any, any other questions for Nikki or?
I've got a question for Nikki.
Yes, go ahead, Cal.
The industrial park was built when or founded as an industrial park? At what, how, how long has this been?
I believe it was purchased around nineteen ninety-two, the very early nineties.
I.
By the county, from a private landowner.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything coming. I'm going to agree with Mr. Davis that, uh, transportation is the thing hindering us from big business. Things Zion's and Farm, Farmville's got a lot of stuff that they've looked at Buckingham and Farmville, and they've chosen the ease of access. I'd, says anything, but, uh, I don't know that the industrial park's ever going to fill up le- as, left as is.
No. Any other comments from the commissioners? We have, uh, been requested to make a change. Pleasure of the commissioner, are we going to move to do that?
Public hearing then? We'd have to move it to a public?
Move to a public hearing, yes.
Chairman, if you, if I'm right, I'm okay with changing the zoning for the property that went to the school. Absolutely no problem at all. My, I'll repeat my concern. My concern is changing the zoning on the other seventy acres without having disassembled the Economic Development Committee that was doing the work to try to determine whether or not, it's not manufacturing or heavy industry that we're looking at. We're looking at commercial, commercial possibilities. Without having that conversation continued and changing the zoning before that conversation is, is a concern to me, right? I don't have a problem with changing the zoning if you haven't got any other alternative, if there are no other ideas. But what you're doing is you're taking those ten or fifteen people that sat around those tables for a year saying, hey, I've got some ideas here, and completely ignoring the fact that they had ideas for the use of that particular property. Why are we ignoring that? And that's, that's the problem I have. So if you want to go ahead and change the zoning on that property that the school purchased, I, I don't have a problem with the motion on that one. I have a problem with changing the other zoning without first having a conversation with a group of people that were started on that Economic Development Committee that had these ideas. If they no longer have any ideas, fine, move forward. But if they have ideas, we ought to be investigating that. And I'll go back to what our fellow commissioner said here. Yeah, nothing's been done for ten or fifteen years on that property, but quite frankly, there hasn't been a group of people that sat down for ten or fifteen years looking at the possibilities either. So that's the only concern I'm making right here.
Any other concerns from the commissioners?
Don't have any concerns. I agree with Supervisor Davis and Backerak that, I think, in thirty years, no action is a pretty clear signal of what that property is. And if we can rezone to have some sort of taxable base, be it small business or residential, I think that's a good path forward. And I understand the request from the board. So my motion will be that we move this at least along to public hearing next month.
And you're, you're referring to both the school property and on the contract anyhow?
On the board's request, yes.
All right, that's a motion to move it forward to public hearing. Have a second.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote then. All right, that moves forward. It's a majority. All right. All right, that will close our regular scheduled planning meeting, and we will now start our work session.
Uh, can we have a couple minutes to pay a water bill?
Thank you.
That's an excellent idea.
Short intermission here.
Oh, man.
That's a good way to come at you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we got everybody back.
Okay, thank you.
We're all freshened up now.
And, um, I don't, I guess you heard, well, I don't know if you heard or not, but I let Nikki know that, um, Tyler will be out for a little bit. He was in an accident and was going to be out for a little while. And so this was kind of, um, you know, I took it over, oh, my name's Kristen Jackson, I'm sorry. I'm the Executive Director for the Commonwealth Regional Council, and I am new as of July first with the council. And, um, but anyway, I've come to a couple of the meetings with Tyler, and I've watched several of them. So, um, I also, um, watched the, the last meeting virtually, and basically, um, I saw that he was presenting the goals, objectives, and strategies. And he had a, um, list of them. And Mr. Kapazinski, um, asked him to be sure and make sure there was no contradictions between what you had already done in the plan and what he was suggest- suggesting for these goals and objectives. So what I did was go through, Tyler had started it before his incident, and then I went through and finished and went all the way through the end. And I, my, my highlights are in blueprint where his is red. Um, and basically, I made sure that it went back throughout the whole plan where it was and found. So nothing contradicts in here. And so, I mean, if you wanted to keep the whole thing, it would be ex- I mean, you know, it'd be fine. If you think it's too wordy, or if there's anything you would like changed, that's fine, you know, as well. I'm glad, I'm open to any suggestions. But I did want you to know, the main thing that, um, I saw in your last meeting was you wanted to make sure what he was saying did not contradict anything you had already done in the first six session, sections. And it absolutely does not. It actually goes right along with it. And it's very, and it's very extensive, and it's very, you know, it's good, it's a good plan with well-thought-out goals and objects, objectives and strategies to, to those. But it's a lot of them, so I don't know if you wanted that made. That was the only concern really. When I went through it, I thought, well, it's a whole lot. I mean, it's very extensive, breaking each section down a lot. And that's fine if that's, you know, what you, what you would do. But if you'd rather us go through and take a few of them out, because a lot of them are sort of worded the same way, if you notice, I mean, worded a little differently, but very similar to one another. I did notice that throughout, but they're on a little bit different category. So he was just very, very thorough on what he went through to do that. Um, and so really, that's kind of what I did for this section. So, um, is there anything that, you know, you need me to go over again or talk about?
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, just, okay, so just clarify for me. The, the question that we asked last time was, with regard to all those recommendations at the last page, did they butt into anything else that was discussed in the upper pages? And what you did, from what you're telling us, is you correlated everything that was there with everything that was so. And I, I didn't see a lot of red line on here. I did see the blues and the greens, and so I know that you made some changes. I only have one quick question on this, page three, uh, citizen opinion survey. You've got a total of blank surveys. Is there a number that's going to go in there, by the way?
That's going to go in when he has the total number of surveys, and I didn't, I didn't have them yet. I didn't look at the.
All right, so, so, but, but going back to my previous question, you did do the correlation, so there's not? Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. I sure did.
Any other comments, questions from the commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one other quick, uh.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
PDR and TDRs, these are development rights. Uh, I can't remember what page I saw them on. Is this something new, PDR, TDR?
Um, purchase the development rights?
Yeah, these are the purchase development rights and the transfer development rights, I guess those are.
Oh, okay. Um, I don't, I don't think it's new. I've seen it in a couple other comprehensive plans. We're working on Lunenburgs, and they have something similar to that, too. But I'm trying to think where they are, too.
Trying to figure out where, I didn't write the page.
I saw it, too.
Page sixty-four, I don't know. I got to take a look at that again here.
The bookmarks on this document in section six.
Section six, yeah.
They, page three.
Section six, page one.
Right, so.
Yeah, that, that's right. On page three, you're right, purchase and development rights. The, um, programs allow localities and other entities to purchase and develop the rights from landowners, ensuring the land remains agr- eh, remains in the agriculture and open space. And then the transfer of development rights, um, or programs. There, they are programs that some areas use, and, um, like I said, I, I had seen them in Lunenburg's plan, that I, I've been working with them more than this one.
Is that a by-county thing, or is that?
It's, it's per, yeah, your request. It's not something, and it's not something that everybody uses for everything. I think he just had that as a suggestion.
So the question is, does that apply to Buckingham County?
Oh, I think it can apply to any county, if you wanted it. We could reach out to.
I guess my point is, does it exist in Buckingham, or do we, does something have to be done to make it exist?
I think something has to be done to make it exist. I think you actually have to reach out.
How does that work with regard to the comprehensive plan, Nikki? I mean, is that, is that something we're recommending, or is that something that, that has to be there before we recommend it?
Program, if you read the section here, it says that programs available to rural property owners might aid them in preserving their land on the holdings while obtaining a desired rate of return. If you'll see, we currently have agricultural and forestal districts. We also have conservationment, conservation easements, um, allowed in those agricultural, uh, districts by right. So these are things that are available. They don't specifically state that in, um, our zoning ordinance, but the comprehensive plan allows for them.
So, again, it's just a, it's a, it's an opportunity, but not necessarily here.
Because it's really telling you that these are available to property owners, and, and it might, these are, these programs might include.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that Buckingham can consider these strategies.
Okay, thank you.
These other commissioners have, uh, any comments or questions?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Does this comprise the end of it? Is this, is this ready now to move?
There, there's actually an implementation, um, section at the end, and I wanted to ask you about that. And poor Nikki, I didn't send, I sent her something. We had no internet today until this afternoon at four twenty. Our internet came back on. And so I sent her an email this afternoon with, um, just like y'all's implementation plan from twenty fifteen, and then one that's more recent, like that Charlotte County did a few years ago. And just looking at them, um, when you, when you had, and I don't, I don't know that she was able, probably not able to get that in the packet. But the implementation plan from Charlotte County is just like a written section, just like this, and it kind of highlights those strategies and, and groups them together, and then says, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this, and this is, you know, this is the final stage. And we'll look at it every so many years, and every time something comes up in finance, we'll think about the comprehensive plan, you know, and it goes, it, it kind of tries to keep it in mind rather than saying, woo, we finished, we'll see you in five years, you know? The implementation part kind of puts it, puts the onus back on all the different, like the Board of Supervisors, you guys, the finance team, you know, any, anybody looking for anything in the county, it kind of refers them back to the actual plan, so that it's a used document rather than one that's put on a shelf for five years. And, um, the only thing I saw, the last one that you guys had, um, it was written out very, like, specifically. There was a chart at the beginning that broke everything down and said specifically who was in charge of checking this off every so often. But then at the, then after three or four pages, then it had a write-up just like this with that same information again written out. And basically, I was just wondering, was that something somebody maybe requested? And you'd like to see it kind of done like that again? Um, or is that something that maybe it was just the way it was done back then, and you'd like it more concise and, um, you know, that kind of thing, so I.
Chairman, I, I like that format, but the question, I think you brought something up, the way it was written in two thousand.
It had like this.